I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of the Perry Municipal Authority, August 2nd, 2021, at 6:15. Roll call, please.
Wines, Eric, Laurel, White.
Here.
Bell.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Dilbeck.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Colar.
Here.
Sterling.
Here. I do declare a quorum. If you'll join us in communication tonight by Reverend Josh Bell.
Let's pray. My Creator, thank you for every seat that has been filled here today, for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room. We thank you. Only you know what we are setting out to accomplish today, and we have an idea, a vision, hints, and daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning. Every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Your righteousness transcends all our efforts of ununderstanding and forgive us of our pride. The pride that puffs us up and the pride that threatens to unqualify us. Strengthen our confidence in who you have made us to be. Set us free from comparison in order to work together efficiently. Bless this meeting today and all those present, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterward. Ready us to make every moment count. In your Son Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Item number one is the consent agenda. There's one item on the consent agenda for approval.
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Wines.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Dilbeck.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Colar.
Yes.
Sterling.
Yes. Thank you. Comments from those assembled pertaining to the items on the PMA? Item 5, proclamation, commendations, reports by the inquired by the governing body. Item 6, any new business that needs to come before the authority this evening? Item 7, motion on adjournment, please.
Seven.
Call, please.
Wines.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Dilbeck.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Colar.
Yes.
Sterling.
Yes. Thank you. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Perry, August 2nd, 2021, at 6:18. Roll call, please.
Wines.
Here.
Laurel. White.
Here.
Bell.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Dilbeck.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Colar.
Here.
Sterling.
Here. I do declare a quorum. Item 1 is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Start, Brown.
Roll call, please.
Wines.
Kiss.
White.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Dilbeck.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Colar.
Yes.
Sterling.
Yes. Item 4, comments from those assembled pertaining to the items on the city agenda. I know that a lot of y'all are here to speak about an item we have on the agenda tonight, so if you would, please, let's wait till we get to those items and read them to record, and then you'll have every opportunity to speak, okay? Item 5, walk the questions, commendations, reports inquired by the governing body. Hearing that, we will move on. Item 6 is the city manager's comments. The city manager unavailable for the meeting this evening. So we will move on to item 7, I consider items pertaining to zoning and planning. There's, item A, B, C, and D, it all deals with the rezoning of the property up on Locust Street. I know that a lot of you all have come to speak about this item, but it would be my recommendation that we table this all together, and I apologize for that, but no one from that organization has come to speak to us. Since the planning commission that we had the other night, the contractor and the guys putting all this together, we've not heard a word from them. I want you to know, as a council, we are not trying to put you off. We haven't heard anything from them. So to avoid us just sitting here trying to hash out the same questions that we all had the other night at the planning commission meeting, I would like to table this until someone from that organization can come speak to us.
Do you need to read anything?
I can, I don't believe so, do I, Bryce?
If you're going to...
You want to read them into record and table each one of them?
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You had your hand up first.
I did. I have a question.
Can you go ahead and stand up and come to the podium and say your name, because it's a different form than we had last time.
Yeah, I'm Jamie Tallison. I live at 1006 Locust. The only questions I had is, do you have the planning paperwork from the developer? They were supposed to turn in plans for the drainage and for the...
Well, as far, the engineer had the plans here that evening with drainage.
But he...
You're talking about a site plan or not? Is it, what's it called? It's not a site plan, Bryce. It's a flat, a flat map. No, ma'am, we have not received that. That's the reason that I just, without that information and without that guy here, I can't answer any of this, and no one around this table can answer that.
And the only other question I had was about the process. It indicates in the paperwork that we were given that the protest of the development was less than 50%. How many of those were sent out? And I thought we had well over 50%.
It's actually, the statute talks about 50% of the area. You did have 50% of the property owners. The problem is the statute measures protest by acreage, okay? So somebody that owned a giant lot, you know, or a giant tract that was within 300 feet could speak for like, you know, 19 people. But in this instance, what you do is you take the, you take the protests and you color the lots in that are the owners of those lots, and then you look at it and say, has, is there 50% protest in acreage? And the answer for this one was that it was not.
So then if you eliminate all the people that rent in the area, they don't have a say-so, and then you're indicating that only those that have large property...
Well, it's not, well, it's not our rule.
Whose rule is it?
It's the state's rule, because zoning is a matter of purely state law, and we have to follow, you know, the rules. And so the rule on giving notice and protest and all that is set out in Title 11, Section 43 dash, I'm not sure of the section, but if you look at Title 11, Section 43, that's planning, I'll tell you what, it's 104, 105, 106. I'm pretty certain of that.
Okay, because I was led to believe that there were 128 letters sent out and that we had 72 that were verified.
Yes. Oh, no, I think that's all true. It's just the problem is that the statute talks about protest is with respect to acres.
Why was that information not put into the original notice that we received? Because we were led to believe that we had more than 50%.
Well, the language that was put into the notice is the exact language from the statute.
Well, it says 50% of homeowners. It doesn't say a geographical or topographical area.
Well, I'd have to see the notice, I'd have to see the notice again. The language in the, it is?
I just think that's really misleading, and I was quite stunned to see this in the...
Okay, it says, it says the owners of 50% or more of area of the lots. So it's not owners, it's of area of the lots. And once again, it's not my rule. This is, this is the state law.
So then we could have gotten renters to sign these opposition letters as well?
No, no, it has to be owners. It has to be owners. But the secret is, the secret is of area. That doesn't mean that, I mean, all that does, all that does is it requires a larger vote of the city council in order to approve it. If they, if they table this, I mean theoretically, if you, if you do continue, continue it to a date, okay, that would preserve this notice, or of course you could not continue it to a date. If you didn't continue it to a date, you'd have to start over again, okay? So I mean, that's kind of that rule. We'd have to put out the notice again. But, but no, the notice does say the owners of 50% or more of area of the lots within that 300-foot radius. Can the date be contingent? Uh, yeah, but every, yeah, certainly, yes, the date can be contingent, but everyone here, because this process moves forward, you know, we did the planning commission and we said in that notice that this would be the meeting, we suspect that this would be the meeting. So the folks that are here that are interested, we would continue it to a date set, and...
We can continue it to the next meeting.
And it can be contingent upon him showing, yes, yes.
And I would give Larry, and let Larry know that guy, some member of that organization will be here at our next meeting.
Okay.
And to one other thing you said that I think that we need to clarify, you said that the renters didn't have a right to sign that, but any home that was within that area, the owner of that home, regardless if it was a rent house or not, they got notice.
Right.
So the owner of that home could still sign that petition you had.
Sure. But there's a big section with the apartments on Ninth Street. That takes a lot of area, geographical area, and they have no say whatsoever, in addition to the fact that I tried contacting the owners or the managers and got nowhere, you know. So I kind of really feel like, even though it may be in state law, this is really penalizing people in the area in more ways than one.
Well, us as a council, I'm not trying to disrespect anything you're saying, but we can't, I mean, that's not our fault.
Sure. No, I get that. I get that. Okay.
I would like to say too, this doesn't mean the council didn't hear the people that were here. I said, it doesn't mean that the council didn't hear the people that were here.
Sure. But, but we didn't, you know, we couldn't even attempt to get the renters here because we felt like, you know, they had no say-so in the whole thing. You know, so there's a whole unheard group.
I appreciate you coming forward. I really do.
Thank you.
George?
Throw a little water with me this way and let's choke out. I apologize for that. I'm still dealing with that, but, well, George Savala, I think most of you know who I am. I live at 1135 Locust Street. My wife and I, we lived there for twenty some years. I lived in this town since 1974. I think I'm in a, maybe not a model citizen, I'm kind of decent citizen. One thing that I like to mention here is there is none of us that know the law. They just got described as. It was not posted, it was posted as you got to get signatures, and that's what we did. We would not have got signatures. We did what we were told to do and how to do it. We were, there was no full description of what you just mentioned. There was none of that. So anyways, I know, I know you guys, I know you guys are going to do the right thing, and I don't have a doubt about that. But, you know, things need to be explained a little more for us ignorant people that don't know these things. So anyways, with that, I'll continue. What else, what else I have. I had a question on the 300 feet for commercial, for this commercial zoning. Was that 300 feet just from the commercial area, or was it 300 feet for the whole project? Because a lot of people that live way out there, a lot farther out than the, than the commercial zone, got notices, and they were like 900 feet out there. So it's a little, it's a little confusing on that side of it, too. So, you know, I'd like to know if it's 300 feet from the whole project or 300 feet from the commercial zone. So, we got the project. I noticed on the newspaper on Saturday that there was a mention of a 25,000 square foot building. At the place that we looked, there was buildings. So maybe it's a misprint, I don't know. But it's, it's like, there's a lot of things going on, it's just kind of like, okay, so what are you going to do? I mean, is it buildings? Is it building? Is it, you know, there's just a lot of things that are just not clicking one with the other. We come in here, it's a different story, it's a different, anyways, I don't want to beat too much on that. It also mentions that, that those buildings, if they do get built, it's for residents only until the whole project is done. So you have to do the four phases, it's five phases altogether, but one of them is the storage buildings. So it says on the paper, again, that this buildings are going to be rented out only to people at the Woods Division until it's all done, and then if there's leftovers or, you know, if nobody can, if none of the residents are renting or not enough of them, I would, I would imagine they're going to rent those out to whoever, correct?
That's the reason we said that we were going to table this.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine. Okay. Thank you. Okay. If they do build those buildings, according to the place I live, they were right up against those trees, they were right up against those shrubs. So I had a question. I was like, well, what's going to happen if Toronto comes and those trees fall on top of those buildings? What's going to happen if ice comes and falls on top of those buildings? Who's responsible for that? Am I responsible for that, or are they responsible for that? So I visited the Stillwater building project that was mentioned to us a couple of weeks ago, and I looked at the one south of the contractor's office. We stopped, we looked at him, I seen no storage buildings. I went to the one that's to the east of there, a pretty good-sized project. I seen no storage buildings being built for this project. So anyways. Well, then I have a question. I'm going to, I'm going to be a bit of a smart aleck. Can somebody here tell me, how can you not recognize a storage building? I mean, it, again, it says on the paper, to defend everybody here, it says on the paper, it will not be recognized as a storage building. I mean, I don't know. I think storage building's a storage building. So anyways. And the other one, you know, I think probably in my place, I think probably in this town, I try to, you know, give this town a bit of an image. I've talked to you people in the past about how I feel about things, you know, it's, I'm very proud. I like to keep my stuff nice, mowed, cleaned, painted. You get to the point where you look around, you're like, what's going on here? And I even mentioned to somebody, it's pretty bad when the Mexican complains about what's going on. Joke. So anyways, I just, I hope you guys do the right thing. I don't want to feel, I don't want to feel special. I don't want any favors, but I think that even if I didn't own that place, I would be saying, why would you want to do that? To a, to a no place like that. So anyways, that's all I got. I hope I'm not stepping on any toes. It's not my, my plan, but you know, just things that I want to do is out. So, and again, I would like to be a little more informed more in depth. There's none of us here to know anything about a lot of these things. We're learning. And so anyways, that's all I have. Thank you. Appreciate you.
George, if you would please, whenever that guy, if we can get him here, I want you to come back and ask those questions.
Okay, I will. I will. You know, I've messaged, I've messaged with him. I called him and once I found out, and he said, he said, hey, because I said, hey, sell me some, I'll buy some lots from you, or two acres, or whatever you want, and I told him, I said, it's worth a lot to me. What do you want? Nope, I wouldn't do that. I said, okay. And he said, he mentioned something, he said, you know what, I wish you and I would have talked whenever about the land. I tried. I tried to find out who bought the land, because I've been wanting to buy the land from that field for years, and nobody could give me that information. So he was nice, he was nice enough, but I can tell, he's a businessman, you know, he's a businessman, and I get it, and I want him to succeed, but I don't want him to deface our neighborhood. I don't want him to deface my house. And I'm going to be selfish here, you know, but, you know, that's, it's not just my house, it's the whole neighborhood. It's a decent neighborhood, you know, it's not, I think everybody keeps their house clean, mowed, for the most part, painted on it. It's just, I think, if we need storage buildings, they need to be somewhere else, and also the access to those, to those buildings. I'm not saying it's a bad thing to have storage buildings, but why do they have to be right there? I mean, we got traffic, we got all those challenges on the street already. There's an alley access to that field. I mean, why can't we put them like on the North End somewhere? Again, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but why they have to be right there? You know, they could be in the back, or in the middle, or somewhere else, you know, and the more decentralized the thing, the less potential for crime you're going to have, because all the neighbors be enough, and they'll be, I mean, they'll be around, and they'll be looking, and they'll be saying, hey, everybody be watching the place, you know. So anyways, that's all I got. Thank you. Appreciate you all. Thank you.
I'm Jennifer Dillard, and I live in the area, but I just want to let you guys know, I know you have a councilman that isn't here. They're trying to watch this live and it's not streaming. We all just tried to check it, too, so just wanted to let you know it's not streaming. They just contacted me because they wanted to see what was going on since he wasn't here tonight. So just FYI.
It's streaming live on YouTube.
On YouTube?
Yep. Go ahead. Yep.
Tiffany George. I live on 1713 North Ninth Street. This may have been addressed last time because I was not here, but do we know how much the city is planning on making off of the storage buildings?
The city?
Yes.
I don't think we make anything off of.
We haven't made any type of, so the whole rezoning commercially for the storage units, the city's not going to...
Electricity would be...
Electricity would be the only, that's why I was just curious.
Yeah, I mean, if there's electricity there, we have no other dog in the fight.
Okay, that's what I was asking. And then just to ask that, I sort of feel the same as George and Marley and several concerned citizens here. Once you open that commercial rezoning in that area to look further down the road as far as, you know, what, I'm sure someone else is going to come and ask ten years down the road, right in the middle of a residential area. So appreciate you all's time.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mrs. Wallace?
Mine's not about theirs. Hi. Everybody knows me by now, I'm sure. I'm Debbie Wallace, and I'm here about some things that were brought up at the last city council meeting that I attended to four weeks ago, not last week, because I didn't talk last week, but the week, two weeks before that. Larry's not here, but he made a comment that I don't think that was appropriate about, I lawyered up, when he was here, sitting here before you jumped in and rephrased the comment, and I think that that was very disrespectful, because I just finally found a lawyer that would listen to me, that was cared enough to listen about all the damage that has happened to my home over the 26 years, and I think him making that comment was very rude, and it was very disrespectful to me, because over the time that he's been in office, I have came to him many, many, many times and tried to speak to him in his office. I've tried to get him to meet with, I wish he was here, with you as well as the city. He's offered to bring free dirt, which he's never brought, and I just think that that was totally unacceptable. Bryce brought up about all the money that's been spent in my area, that that city council, the amount of money that you've spent on the, on the projects of the drainage. I received a, in October of 2019, I received from the MKEC Drainage Authority, Larry Purnell sent me a drainage study from them that informed me if I tried to do anything in my area to stop the water that they were worried about, houses at the very end of the street might flood. flood. And that was in October 2019. And then the city council heard a proposal of a major drainage study in February of 2020 that was going to be done over in the Tower and addition, but was put on hold because when they wanted to do the master drainage study, and I don't have the date of this article that was in the paper, but they were going to do it for $20,000, but because Bill Strelor wanted the project to be looked at at three or four, the same process could be followed to address drainage issues. A second proposal to address a specific drainage project was given to the council. Steve Frank, P.E. of MKEC, made a presentation and answered questions concerning the project. This followed a discussion, especially discussed was the drainage issue, Second and Maple Streets. Frank explained what was involved. He suggested to the city develop a drainage complaint form that would help issues come up. Mayor Strelor asked him to take a look at all five or six current drainage problems within the city. So once again, I think that was misrepresented that you said that money was spent over my area. Not one thing has been done in my area. Again, Saturday night when the storms came through, if you drive by my area, there's rocks, dirt, and it was up to my door. This isn't a once in a while thing, this is every day. And Larry Purnell still is blaming it on the people that built the housing addition. He tries to blame it on Sorrel addition. I'm still waiting and I'm still receiving nothing, no help at all from the city. I don't know what else to do with you guys. I will keep coming to every city council meeting until we can figure out a way to make the water go around my home. I have estimates, I've been getting estimates for drainages. They're eight to $10,000 to put drains in my property to try to even do anything. I've got from $2,000 to $8,000. I've been waiting since October 2019 for the same people to come and talk to me over It's not my fault that the water rushes down. Water goes downhill. We've known that there's water problems for all this time. There has to be a way to stop this. The free dirt that he promised me in 2019, I've never received. Can we block the road off when the storms are coming, when we know it's by sandbags? A power wash to easement so the water can go anything while we're waiting for these engineers? What can the city do to help me? There's got to be something. There's got to be something.
The plan is supposed to have been received by the end of July, which was two days ago. They didn't send it to me. They may have sent it to Larry. Larry is ill today. Had we received those, that response from MKEC with their plan in a timely manner, we would have placed that on this agenda. And quite frankly, perhaps administration should have called you and told you that because I think what we said was that was coming in at the end of July and we had hoped to have something on this meeting. Tomorrow, the city clerk can check with MKEC and see what that is. And then I would suppose that the city council will look at that plan the next time it needs. Let's say that's where we are.
Okay, but we still need to figure out something, why we wait for them because doing nothing is just causing more and more damage. And my mother is stage three kidney failure, so I'm busy. Sitting here on Mondays is a lot. I've been taking care of a stage three cancer patient for the last three months. Every day I take her to radiation, chemo on Mondays. So my days are full. So sitting here and having to come here every day is not a pleasure. It's not what I want to do. But staying up and having to worry about my house flooding and my mom's health every day isn't pleasant either. It's really not. So sandbags, dirt, whatever, I'm not, I'm at my wits' end. I just don't know what else. The water doesn't stop. It doesn't stop and it's worse because now it's worse to weigh all the vegetation, everything that used to slow it down. It's just massive. And like I said, if any city council member wants any videos or any pictures, I will give you my email, I will send them to you. Anything you guys want to see, any kind of problems, I know all you men are smart enough to figure out some way to put something to stop it. Plastic, I don't know what we have to do. I really take a lot of pride in my yard and my home. It's very nice. You've been there one time, you see, I try. I just need some help from the city council. I don't know where else to go. I vote for you guys, I pay my taxes. I'm here and I'm not moving. I can't afford to move. My mom doesn't want to move, so I'm stuck. I'm here. She's too sick, she doesn't want to do it. So I'm going to be here until the city helps me figure this out because it's not. I've done.
We will make a call to them tomorrow. We'll be proactive.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We'll make a call to them and Dixie, you have her number, right?
I don't know that I have your number.
Could you?
Can you write it down?
Write it down and bring it up here. Let's make sure we can communicate with you directly about what we learned. And then I'll send that off to your attorney also.
I think he's going to be emailing you in the morning.
Okay. And there's no problem with you getting an attorney. Everyone is entitled to a representative. The city council has a representative and you're entitled to one too.
Actually, somebody just listened to mine damage. That's all he did is he called and listened. I couldn't even get people here to do that. That's what happened.
You said something about Bryce, I'll defend Bryce a little bit. You said that, he said they were spending money on your neighborhood. We've spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on engineering over there. So I mean, there's a lot of times we spend money you can't see.
Okay, well then let me rephrase it.
I do want you to know that we are spending money on engineering over there. It's a lot of money.
Okay, well, 15 years ago, I was told if we just power wash this opening right here, the water will run down here. Well, they didn't and now it just puddles. And so $1,000 worth of dirt that I brought in is slowly being washed away because the drain guy said that was the smartest thing I did because I put that dirt in there to build that little bit of wall or I would have lost my home, my whole home would have been underwater again and I would have lost everything. And none of it's covered from your home insurance because I live in a no flood zone. I have tried everything with my insurance. I live in a no flood zone, so I can't get flood insurance unless I go through FEMA. Deductibles are so high, you can't afford, I can't afford them. I don't make the kind of money that some people do. I just don't. And so I can't afford those kind of insurance. So everything that happens with water, none of that is covered on insurance. Everything I've done in my home has come out of my pocket or I've had to go see the bank because nothing's covered under homeowners, none of it. So I've spent thousands of dollars to fix my home.
I'm not saying you haven't, but you just said that we haven't spent money over there that you've.
I haven't seen. Let's, okay, nothing has been done on my little block to prevent water from coming in my house, so let me rephrase that. Is that better? Okay. So I'm sorry if I misrepresented what I said.
You're frustrated, you're allowed.
Yes, I'm very frustrated.
And you're allowed to vocalize that, that's fine. And we will call and call you tomorrow.
My floor has only been down a year as of this weekend. This floor is the third.
Any other comments? Okay, we're going to read some of these into record and then I think item A, we can go ahead and receive that recommendation though, correct?
Yes, that recommendation was to rezone the property that they wanted to rezone.
Let me read it right quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, item A, under seven, is receive recommendation from the Perry Planning Commission on the application filed by Jimbo, how do you say his name, Car- Carley? KMR Development LLC applicant for the rezoning of three specific properties located on the west 30 acres of the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter of section 15 Township 21 North, range one west of the Indian Meridian County of Noble, State of Oklahoma, of C2 General Commercial District One, or District, I'm sorry, R1 Single Family Resident District and RG Residential District and within the street address of 1100 and 1200 block of Locust Street, Perry, Oklahoma, 73077 for a new residential and commercial development. Okay, council, this is just receiving the recommendation of the planning commission. Derek and Gloria and myself were at the planning commission. They tabled, we'll start with C2, the general commercial. They tabled that. They wanted more information themselves. And so the recommendation was that we tabled the C2 commercial district. They, the recommendation on R1 and RG was both to proceed with that and rezone that was their recommendation. There was some, is it multifamily?
Duplexes.
Duplexes that were originally in RG and they determined that they could exist in R1. So that was their recommendation and then some rental properties was RG. Is that correct? Is that what they were?
It was, I believe it was the age restricted homes.
The age restricted homes, yeah, okay.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So that is the recommendation of the planning commission. So, but that being said, if it goes to, if we choose to vote and table this, we won't make, do any action tonight. This is just receiving the recommendation from the planning commission. So is there any questions?
May I add?
Yes, you may.
One of the big things that was mentioned there was wanting him, Derek, to answer questions.
Correct.
Which I think they deserve it, the council deserves it as well, everybody else sitting in this room deserves those answers, so.
I agree 100%. And there's a lot of people on this council that have the same questions you guys have. So, all right, that's item A. There's no, no action needed on item A. Okay, so let's move on to item B. Item B is to consider the approval of ordinance number 2021-11.
Motion to table until, do you need an actual date or?
I would say to the next meeting contingent upon him, yeah.
Till the next meeting contingent upon his attendance.
Roll call please.
Whites, yes. White?
Yes.
Brown? Yes. Do back? Yes. Color? Yes.
Item C is consider approval of ordinance number 2021-12.
Motion to table until the next meeting contingent upon his attendance.
Second?
Roll call please.
Whites, yes. White?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Brown? Yes. Do back? Yes. Color? Yes. Stronger?
Yes, thank you. Item D, consider approval of ordinance number 2021-13.
Motion to table contingent upon his attendance.
Second?
Roll call please.
Whites, yes. White?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Brown? Yes. Do back? Yes. Bond?
Yes.
Color?
Yes.
Stronger?
Yes.
Yes. All right, we'll move on to a new subject, item eight.
Receive recommendation from the Perry Planning Commission on an application filed by Jordan and Kathy Karris, the applicant for a use by review and a site plan review on a tract of real property described in book 552, page 190, as recorded with the Noble County Clerk's Office on April 12, 2001. A piece parcel and tract of land situated in the west half of the northeast quarter, the northeast quarter of section 21 Township, 21 North, range one west of the Indian Meridian, Noble County, Oklahoma, with a street address of 1606 Fur and or 1608 Fur, Perry, Oklahoma, 73077, for the location of a new Simple Simon's Pizza franchise. Take action on said recommendation. Okay, on the background, council, it says in the first sentence that they, a use by review and a site plan review. That is a misprint. There was no site plan review done at the planning commission. They did a recommendation on the lot split and they did a, they did the use by review, but they did not have a site plan. So their recommendation was to approve the lot split and to approve the use by review.
Second?
Roll call?
Whites, yes. White?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Brown? Yes. Do back? Yes. Bond?
Yes.
Color?
Yes.
Stronger?
Yes, thank you. Item nine, consider matters pertaining to the holding of a public hearing on a new CATV provider and adopt a new permanent ordinance for the CAT provider. Item A, conduct public hearing pursuant to resolution of the city council of the city of Perry. A, notifying the public that there will be a public hearing held on the second day of August 2021 or at after 6:15 in the city council chambers of the city, which hearing is held pursuant to the request of the Clarity Telecom LLC, request to operate a community antenna television system within the corporate limits of the city of Perry, Oklahoma, with such public hearing held pursuant to section 626 of the Cable Communication Policy Act of 1984 as recommended, with the purpose of such hearing to, one, identify the cable-related community needs and interests, review the technology and legal and financial ability of the cable operator to construct and operate a cable system during any proposed term of any permitted ordinance, and B, direct the city clerk to publish this resolution in the newspaper for general circulation within the municipality at least once, not less than five days prior to the date of the public hearing. All right, Bryce? You've been the one that's kind of headed this up.
Well, it's a, it's a public hearing, so anybody that would like to talk can talk. I would just say briefly, this is a fiber to the home proposal. We don't have the power to technically regulate the internet, but we do own the polls and we can allow who we want on the polls. So that's kind of how we have a little bit of authority. We do have authority over CATV systems, that's cable systems, and they have to pay us 5% of the gross that they make on cable in the right of way. But what they want to do is they want to put a fiber, a fiber system to the home, which would increase speeds, connectivity, bandwidth, and provide, you know, great, I suppose, I mean, if they get it done, provide great service to the residents and businesses in the city of Perry. They're making a very similar proposal to the city of Enid. I work for Enid. That's tomorrow night. They're making a similar proposal to Stillwater. Kind of matched these ordinances and agreements to maximize the benefit to the community. But for purposes of this public hearing, it's to listen to the public, what would they like? The only other thing I can say is the second purpose is to find and to tell you whether this company has the technical, legal and financial ability to do what they say they're going to do. Okay? And so a review has been made of their team technically. They're, they're really good. Lots of experience in cable television, lots of experience in bandwidth, connectivity, cable, fiber and the like. Legal, I mean, they got great, they got great lawyers. I've been dealing with them on the ordinance. And the financial, we did get copies of what Russ asked me to get and we did that confidentially as a confidential record under the Open Records Act because it could provide something You know, it's, it's a startup, but it's a startup with a lot of money. And, and they, and of course, then you've got the local component, and that's, Desi is from Perry and he's kind of fronting this for us, and he certainly is, is, is a good man and doesn't want to make, you know, doesn't want this to be anything but successful. So those are things that, that, that really go to it. So I guess on that issue, I would say that it's the opinion of both the city attorney and the CEO that, that Clarity does have the technical, legal, and financial ability. Did you check that with Russ? Yeah, so, so, so that is the opinion, so that part of it. Now we can hear if there's any members of the public that want to speak to, speak to this. Now, I'll tell you the, the rest of the story. We currently have a CATV franchise with, with a lease, suddenly, Altis, suddenly, and, and we have a separate ordinance for that, but that, that license to them expired in October of two thousand and twenty. Okay? And we have, I have tried, both in Perry and in Enid, to get Altis to respond and to come to the table and to get an agreement. And I have been unsuccessful in both places because sometimes, you know, these, I think the cable companies realize that, you know, cable is no longer the, the thing, you know, it's, it's streaming and Amazon and, and all that, and it's get a better internet and all that, so they're not really that interested. They are, they do continue to pay. The same thing happened in Park City and Taquaw. They both have Cable One, and I did Poncas, a franchise, and I did Taquaw, and they weren't interested in Taquaw and renewing either. So that's kind of, you know, now a, now a trend. So theirs has ended, their poll agreement has ended, they continue and tell me if they, for some reason, aren't paying our franchise, our licensing fee, I mean, if you see any change there. So at some point, we're going to have to, you know, give them notice about, and, and they can come under the terms of this one if they want, you know? But I haven't repealed the old one because they're still operating under it, even though their, their, their license has stopped. So that's the full picture of cable in, in Perry. It's very similar in Enid, and I don't know about Stillwater, but they are an Altis, an Altis Suddenlink company too. The, the Suddenlink was good, the problem came when Altis, which is a foreign group, came in and bought it. I don't know what, what their purpose was, but it certainly wasn't to improve service, you know, I mean, they didn't, they didn't really have that with two hour phone calls, trying to get somebody on the, on the line and the like. And I know it was a COVID year last year, but there hasn't been a lot of improvement, so that's what I have to say.
So your recommendation is for us to hold a public hearing?
Yes.
This is the public hearing.
This is the public hearing, yeah, right now.
Uh, I, I've been on the council for quite some time, and I haven't, and I don't know how long I've been here, forget twelve years now, but I've never seen anyone be this aggressive and this accommodating to want to be a part of our community and do the right thing to help us. Granted, Desi is from Perry, comes from a good family. I don't know when it was last week, Derek, we met, I don't remember, time gets away from me, but anyway, they'd come in and, and Desi had met with, with Bryce, I believe, and maybe Larry, I don't know who all the meetings with, and he wanted to come back and meet with me and to kind of inform me what was going on, and I invited Derek to come in because I don't know electronics and Derek's electronic guy. And so I invited Derek to come in, and Derek had some great questions, and they actually brought the, the CEO of the company, kind of Rich, he come in and met with us that day. And it's amazing, the area that they're expanding in, but he made it very well known that northern Oklahoma, north central Oklahoma was huge in their playground. And I just, and when the meeting was over, I got an email from Rich saying, hey, thanks for letting us come in, talk to you guys, and Desi emailed me, and so I, I just appreciate their aggressiveness to want to be here. I think they're the real deal. Derek, you had me.
I think a lot of us have heard for years, well, yeah, we're going to upgrade your, upgrade your system, we're going to upgrade your system, we're going to upgrade your system, and nothing, you know? And I think we're starting to fall behind, you know? Other people have all these opportunities to do things with the new technology, and we're just kind of at a stalemate. I know my neighborhood in particular, if you try to get a certain brand of, of service, you know, they'll tell you, oh, yeah, your, your area is great, and then you have a technician come in and you get eight meg on your line, you can't even keep a, can't even keep a signal.
Uh, that guy, Derek probably ought to say before I would, but he says, you know, regardless of what we pay for, I mean, it could be a hundred, a hundred and fifty meg, but you're really only getting forty five, you know, at the best. They're saying five hundred upload and download at the house. That's massive.
Wait, wait, wait.
Huh?
He said five hundred upload?
It'll, it'll be bidirectional, whatever you get down will be, there's multiple packages, it won't just be, it won't just be the one that you can get.
But it'll be mirrored?
Yes, bi, bi, yeah, bi-directional.
Okay. I mean, like, that's the problem we run into right now with most of the churches is.
Not too many people rely on upload as much as, like, most, most connections aren't worrying about upload, but, yeah, in your situation, upload.
Streaming is awful. I mean, we can't even get eight.
Is that when you're streaming your servers, I guess?
Yeah, so like, all, all the churches in town, we all struggle with the same problem because we don't have, upload, upload speeds are capable of doing multiple streams at one time. And so, I mean, that's super cool. Another agency and group promised similar things and set up systems at our churches and found out that that wasn't necessarily the case. And then when you go back and say, well, we upgraded our systems, they're like, oh, we're so sorry, it's just not there yet, this isn't that at all, we're talking whole infrastructure change, right? Yes?
Yeah, completely.
Now, I don't remember the dollar factor, but it was relatively cheap compared to what we got net, I mean.
They say they're going to be competitive, and, and it's fifty dollars to connect your house is the number that I heard. Now, there's going to be a monthly service charge, and I'm sure it's going to be similar to what, what you're currently paying, but to the extent that the service is better and, and you've got degrees that you can make better, I mean, it's all about, I mean, the world is all about the internet now, you know, so.
According to them, the, the rates will be very competitive compared to what, what you're currently.
With faster downloads.
With faster downloads and uploads.
Exponentially faster.
Yeah. Or faster options.
What's up?
That's true, and it's faster option. I think it's, and, I mean, we talk about it all the time, that we want to be able to keep citizens happy, and we want to be able to retain people, grow people, I mean, it's part of why we're all in here talking about this name credit addition, and if we don't look at opportunities for faster streamlines and stuff, it's going to be a problem for larger companies, you know, we've talked about wanting to grow commercially, we want to grow residentially, we want to keep people that we do have, how can we be able to do that if we don't have ways to stream? It's just part of the life today.
Desi wanted to talk to you guys, so if there's any questions, he's on the phone, so, does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask him?
Want to rehash some of those?
I mean, I just, I, it's not that I doubt Derek, Derek knows his stuff, but he said that it's bidirectional, you're talking at five hundred, if you choose the plan, five hundred megabytes per second download, that you'll have five hundred megabytes per second upload.
Yes, sir, that's correct. With fiber, it is a secret service, so our smallest package of advertising would be five hundred meg. We actually do up to ten gig service, and that's, that's just the nature of fiber, that's just physics. Currently today, the plant, copper plant in Perry is, is coax and copper, and on coax, you don't read that it'll have, you know, potentially do up to one gig, but the reality of coax is, it's around forty five meg, and I think that's probably what you're, you know, you're speaking to, then you may get eight meg upload or download with fiber to the home, and what truly revolutionize the entire town. You know, we're, we've loaded, we, we had conversations today, Clarity, which is our corporate parent company, service that will be, be, be ran under his blue pink cable television and the internet, we're going to be the sponsor of the sixteen season celebration, we've merged that with Chamber of Commerce. We, we plan on being as active in that community as I was when I was there in the eighties and seventies, so we're looking forward to the BS, to answer your question. It is a secret service, whatever service is bought, whether that's five hundred meg, little gig, or heck, if we find that a Hollywood movie production that wants to operate in Perry, Oklahoma, they could get ten gig service, and it would be just like they were in LA. Yes, sir.
Desi, can you speak, I'd, I'd said, kind of rehashed a little bit about what, what was said in the meeting, but.
Beg your pardon, I couldn't hear.
I kind of rehashed what was said in the meeting, can you hear me now?
I'll come over here.
I'll come over there.
Sorry.
Just, just say, just say.
I kind of rehashed what was said in the meeting on, on rates, but saying that, that you guys would be competitive, do you want to talk about the rates, the rate structure at all, or what, what's your message is there?
Oh, yes, sir, on the rate structure, okay. So, in, in trying to get a rate structure, not only here and for Enid and Stillwater and Rasson, which I actually did, Martin's, on Thursday, I was in Guthrie last week, we were in Martin's. We're going to hold off on releasing the rate structure in the Oklahoma markets simply because it's going to take about twelve months to build out Perry, twelve to twenty four months, it's probably taken about three years to build out Enid. We're going to hold off, I can tell you that we're going to be bringing in twice the capacity for half the price. That's, that's the direction. We don't want to invest eight million dollars in Perry and be priced out of the game. We're not going to invest twenty five million dollars in Enid and be priced too high, same thing for Stillwater, Martin's, Park City. So the rate structure, while I can publicly share it, will likely be twice the speed that you currently have at half the price.
Any other questions? You're about to blow Josh's mind, I'm telling you.
Well, there's this part, Desi, you know, like, I'm a minister, so obviously I'm, I'm representing my ward, but I've got thirteen congregations that I represent on, on the ministerial alliance, and the idea of the commercial license that we have to purchase as a nonprofit business is already going to be exponentially less than what we're paying right now with any of the agencies.
Yes, sir.
And, and being able to go back to tell the ministers that we'll be able to stream without having to limp along, that, that, that's going to make them really happy. And so I'm trying not to get super excited and go, yeah, let's do this now, because I'm just saying, we've had, we had so many problems during the pandemic, it's, I can't even begin to tell you how bad it was. And it mattered to us because a lot of the stuff we were doing with, with FEMA and the regional food bank and all the other agencies, we're all doing Zoom, and we weren't able to keep up with the speed Zoom and having to do that on our phones, I mean, it's, I mean, I, we have other industries in town that have the ability to have their own T one lines, or they have their own lines directly to them, not that I'm bitter, but everybody else in town, we, we, we have to limp along and pray to God that we can turn on the phone, so, so I'm a little excited.
We're going to fix that for you.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
And we're going to fix that and, and, and fix everything. Perry will literally probably be the, I believe it's going to be the first town in Oklahoma that has true fiber to the home, to every home and business in, within the city of Memphis.
What is your timeframe?
Yeah, that's the other part.
So we should, I don't know if anyone else seen, but we've had construction crews, bargaining, surveyors in both Perry and Enid for the last two weeks. Once that's done, I talked to Bryce, I talked to Mr. Frinell, we're going to start submitting permits for right of way on, and, and poll attachment agreements. We will go as fast as the city and the citizens will allow us to go. We're currently in South Dakota and North Dakota, out driving back from Cheyenne, went to Wyoming. We are a big sponsor of Frontier Days up in Cheyenne because we're building out the entire city of Cheyenne. Ground freezes in October in those northern markets, we've got fifty construction crews that need to move down, so as fast as the, the council and permitting and citizens allow us to go, we'll go.
So.
To your question, to your question, Bill, how long? Twelve to twenty four months, if not, sir.
To all, to all the homes that wish to have your service within twenty?
To all the homes, yeah, that were outlined in the city limits that we presented, that I showed you two weeks ago. Yes, sir.
Hey, Des, I have somebody that asked a question on my watch, a resident, who says, as this fiber comes into the home, you know, how is it transferred throughout the home? I mean, you, you're not going to run fiber in the walls, it's going to come into something and then it will, it will Wi-Fi through the house, is that the way it works?
Yes, sir, they'll have a Wi-Fi router, just like a Wi-Fi router they would have with AT&amp;T or Suddenlink today, and it'll be Wi-Fi once you get into the house. And once, here's the thing, once you get fiber to the premise, property values will increase three to five percent. This is a game to, to help, it, it is across the board, just search Carnegie, Mountain University, Harvard, Yale, fiber to the home will increase property values, once you have it, it won't go away, it'll be there, it's, you will be having cable television and internet at the speed of light, not coax, not through copper hard wire, speed of light, that's what this is all about. We're actually going to meet with a real estate agent on Wednesday, we're looking at the item left building there on the square, we'll house equipment in there and we convert that to office space up top and a retail space down below. I've talked to the YMCA about their esports program and some that they're contemplating for the fall. We'll work with the Perry Carnegie Library, I know that, I visited the, the library the last time I was over there, two weeks ago, and found out what she was paying for internet, and we'll work with the Perry Hospital, I, as you know, mom was on the board up there, I know exactly what they're paying out there for in-stream for rural healthcare, this will be a game changer for these house. It's not Wi-Fi, pardon me, it's not fixed wireless, it's not over the air, you're not going to have to worry about storms and it goes out, this is fiber to the home.
Uh, someone also asked the question, what would the cost be to an individual homeowner? And I think you said that the connection will be like fifty dollars to get, to get it connected, right? Or, or?
That's the, that's the one-time non-recurring fee to access, to, that's your install charge, essentially, it's going to be around fifty dollars.
Okay. So, Desi, if I choose to have this service brought to my house, is there a initial contract that we're required to sign for a year, two years?
No, sir, this is, this is like your cable TV Suddenlink service. You don't, you don't sign a twelve month Suddenlink contract.
Okay.
Now, I will say, the, the previous question, I'm going to, I think this will actually help you out a little bit. If you have existing network that, that doesn't support the full bandwidth, that would have to be upgraded internally, that is not a portion that you guys, I mean, I think that kind of goes along with what Bryce was asking, but, but your.
Hardware.
Your hardware and, and network within your residence would have to be upgraded to get the full speed that you're talking about that will come to the home.
Oh, I'm on CPE gear there, Derek, I think that was Derek talking.
Yeah.
CPE gear there that will be a router to support one gig, five hundred meg, ten gig, we'll provide that router for you, yes, sir.
Right, but, but any other, all I'm getting at is somebody that owns a residence, any other networking equipment that they have within the home would have to be. other networking equipment that they have within the home would have to be upgraded to support the speeds that you're providing as well.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure that it would, I'm sure that, well, it just depends, Derek, I mean, most routers today are like, you know, one gig routers.
Right.
They, they're just not getting used because you gotta, you gotta copper piece of metal.
But you may have a 10-100 switch. I'm sure it's a 10-100, unless you've upgraded since.
Uh, well, I have upgraded.
Okay.
But it's, it's still, it's still a 10-100 and then we have a...
Desi, you probably know or don't know, but Stillwater Medical Center is the owner of the hospital here now.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, we can go to a gig, but...
All right, is there any other questions, uh, or comments to Desi, I mean?
Do you wanna come try on a couple of streets now?
I'm sure, I'm sure he's not trying or talking.
If you're in my ears, it's okay.
You're in my enciffy.
All right, any, any other questions before we let him go? Hey, Desi, I appreciate you wanting to be on here with us.
You bet, I appreciate it, we'll be around, don't worry.
All right, we'll talk soon, thank you.
I don't have all the details, but I'll add that they, they plan a redundancy loop as well to help with downtimes, so, any cuts, things like that, there'll be redundancy. I don't have all the details, I just know that they're planning it, so...
I keep wondering, like, so fiber's like a completely different way of transferring data, so would there have to be a hub here? Like, in order for that to work, 'cause you'd have a hub in Stillwater or, and it would go out, but the further out you are from that, the less, it's the same idea as cable, but just faster.
Yeah, essentially, there'll be, yes, I mean, and there'll be...
I'm using the wrong language, but...
Several, uh, I look, yeah.
In order to get that kind of speed, you'd almost have to have kind of a spot here in order to get that kind of... I'm wondering if it...
They're, the bandwidth already exists.
Right, so they're just gonna tap into it.
Basically.
And then, with the people in the rural communities just outside of us, in our county, would they be able to patch into this, or would that have to be negotiated in a different process? I mean, he's just focusing in on the city, I, I just know that our folks that are just literally a mile out of city limits are having to use different types of internet completely. Not that it's gonna affect us this evening, I'm just...
Yeah, the agreement is...
Us.
Yeah, city limits.
Well, because he's...
I was just gonna say, he does have some plans and talks with other people ongoing, but I don't think it's affected by it.
Because he's talking about using city poles, I had to ask him if people outside the city limits but still on city utilities would be covered, which would be like skyline and, you know, very serious. And he said, not in the first round, in this 12 to 24 months, but then they would look at that next and maybe 36 months or something, that, which that'd only still be the people still, basically on city electric because we have the poles there. Now, if you're not talking about that, if you're talking more...
No, that's exactly what I was thinking, that exact specific area. They're like right there on that little outside of us, they get our power, but they don't get anything else.
Right, well, I was worried about myself, really, but...
I mean, I was thinking in that direction, but, you know.
We're gonna have people five miles out instead of city pole, just set a pole there.
That's right, Eric, do you have the power?
I guess the main, I mean, if he's talking to other people outside, that's a possibility, but I, I mean, that's outside of this agreement.
Exactly.
Okay. I don't have a good poker face, so I don't know what's, what's the next thing we need to do.
All right, that's, uh, we've covered all those questions. Uh, we will close the public hearing.
Do you have to make a motion to do that?
No, that's fine. Unless someone else wants to talk.
Sit down, Chief. Item B, Consider Approval Ordinance Number 2021-14, Amending Chapter 9 of the Perry Municipal Code 2020, Providing for, uh, granting a non-exclusion permit, exclusive permit to cable television operators for the construction, operation of the cable system, and providing for a permitting article by the addition of a new Article 6 to the enti, to entitled, to be entitled CAT permitting article, providing for Section 9-601, entitled Definition of Terms, providing for Section 9-603, entitled Grant of Permit, providing for Section 9-603, entitled Standards of Service, providing for Section 9-604, entitled Permit Fee Rates and Charges, Conditions on Sale and Transfer, or Cert Transfer, providing for Section 9-605, entitled Compliance and Monitoring, providing for Section 9-606, entitled Insurance Indemnification, Bonds or Other Securities, uh, providing for Section 9-607, entitled Government and Educational Access and Emergency Alert, providing for the miscellaneous expenses, providing for Repeal of Savings, Codification, Settability and Decuring Emergency. It's a whole lot of articles and permits.
Were you gonna talk first?
Oh, I was just gonna say, you know, I'm working with Enid on this too, and so we have Enid and my former assistant Carol Lehman, who's the city attorney now, have been working on this document, and I've been sending her things that I negotiated and she's been sending me some stuff that she negotiated, we put it into, you know, one document. And, you know, the, the issues here, this is a 10-year deal. You know, this is really CATV, this is cable that we're talking about, they're gonna build this different system, but we only have the power to reg, we've got two powers, one, we get to regulate, we have the power to regulate CATV cable in our rights of way, that's by federal and state law. And we have the right to say who gets on our poles, so that's where our power comes from. The FCC says you don't make any money from internet, from, from video services, you make nothing for that, which isn't fair, and someday they may change that. And if they change that, this agreement says that we can get up to 5% of their gross revenue on that. But if that isn't changed, then we're just stuck with 5% on this, on the cable stuff. And I'm telling you, that's an ever diminishing, diminishing amount, and that money, together with the money that comes in from Altis, Suddenlink is what funds peg, or funds pin, you know, so at some point, you know, that fund, that funding is gonna continue to go down and we're gonna have to make up that, that difference unless the FCC changes. So this is for 10 years, uh, they're promising, you know, he said one to two years, they're promising in two years 50% of the city, in three years 90% of the city. Okay? And I've seen the maps and it's, it's, it's where all the folks are. He also told me today, and Larry wants, uh, fiber out to our south commercial park, so that he can put that out and advertise that, and they promised me that that will, that will go with the first, uh, you know, the, the first build out, he's promising that, although it's not in the agreement, you know, he has promised that. The term is for 10 years, oh, if, if anybody wants to extend within the service area, you need to have 30 residents per linear strand of mile, and then they will put it up, you know, 30 customers within a line, and then a linear strand of miles is pretty long, and you can serve both sides of the street and, and, and the like. We have a favored nations clause, uh, we can't grant anybody any better than this, and if we do, then, then they get it. Uh, they will accept and file the, the permit, accepting this within 60 days of the date that we approve it. He told me today that if we approve this today, they're gonna start with a permitting process, uh, get with Brian Wheatley, get with Jesse, get with Brian Henry, and get this, get this process rolling. I have a poll agreement that I furnished two copies of at the last meeting, uh, that's not, that's not finalized yet, but I have emails and assurances from them. The, the contract says that it will be the same as any one that we have with an existing contractor, well, that agreement is over, I mean, that agreement has terminated, as October 2020. And so we haven't fully negotiated that, that's something else, but I've provided them a copy of what I'd like to see, and, uh, and he assured me in an email today that we will, that we will get there. Uh, we've got some provisions on indemnity, insurance, uh, in the poll attachment agreement, uh, they're going to have to pay a percentage of our vegetation, our line vegetation costs, okay? Uh, and, and so that's gonna help, uh, that. Uh, they're aerial in, in areas that it's aerial, and they're underground where there's areas of underground. Now, let me tell you one of the big issues, 'cause, you know, AT&amp;T and everybody's putting in lines underground right now, they're busting water lines and they're busting sewer lines, I'm not guaranteeing that that won't happen, okay? But we have insurance for that, and I'll tell you, our city folks, when we call OK, we're gonna have to do our very best job of identifying where that water line is, because that's where we put the flags and, you know, they, they move forward. So I'm not telling you that there won't be some disputes, uh, because there most assuredly will be some, will be some, uh, water breaks. Uh, we've got a good definition of, of, of gross revenue, uh, we've got things on assignment, condition of sale, where, you know, they've got to come to us and transfer, we have rights to their books and records, they have to have at least a million dollars of insurance. Uh, they're gonna give us two, uh, dedicated, uh, non-commercial access channels for the city and one dedicated access channel for the, for the school system, uh, that they can use, hopefully they'll want to use it, uh, and, uh, and go forward. We've got a preemption section, an employment required section, uh, force majeure, you know, we have another ballot of COVID, you know, that hits hard, it could push a date, you know, that could push a date, but, you know, I'm gonna say the same thing that I'm gonna say, you know, 45 miles this way, you know, tomorrow, and that is, you know, absence, bankruptcy and solvency, you know, those lawyer letters, absent that, after reviewing this, this looks like a good permitting ordinance, it looks like a good company, and it looks like a worthwhile chance. What's the worst thing could happen? The worst thing could happen is, uh, you know, they don't get it done and it doesn't work, you know, and we have, and we buy it, or somebody else comes in and buy, we will get fiber to the home, you know, 'cause they have years before they have to start paying something back. So this infrastructure will be put in, particularly if we're first, but, you know, my recommendation is approve the ordinance, and I don't think that we have a whole lot of risk, and I think we have a huge upside. And when it's like that, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's probably good to approve, but it's your decision, not mine.
There, there was discussion at one point, you had, was the, the access channels, and we discussed, and Larry in that meeting, that that was not, not the direction necessarily...
Oh, no, they have two access, they, they are providing us two access channels, are you talking about equipment?
Yeah, we discussed changing that.
Changing that to free internet? Yeah, there was that, there, there was that option, that we could have free internet at City Hall, only at City Hall.
In the meeting, the discussion was providing it to the city as a blanket.
Yeah, that never, uh, that never made it to the document, I of course wasn't at that meeting.
I know.
And, uh, but the only thing that made it to the, the, uh... The discussion was the contract was at the City Hall, and then, and then it was either or, and, and we thought the access, uh, channels were more valuable than one service to City Hall, but that's what the...
Well, we felt like in, in the meeting that we had, discussion we had, and I understand you weren't there, but...
Right.
That, the tendency, I mean, if Suddenlink goes away, there's no more access channels, and how many people are actually watching Penn, I mean, you know what I'm saying? There'd be more people probably live streaming it on YouTube or Facebook or some, some other source than the Penn channel. And so, we, he did say that the agreement was to bring free internet to City Hall.
Right.
And, and we said, well, what about these other businesses we got, I mean, we got the jail or the, the police department here, and, and we got the Carnegie Library and, and of course, we have other places, and I, I don't remember Derek 100%, I mean, it wasn't set in stone, I mean...
Well, he said it was either or, but he, he did, they did agree to, to the locations.
He just said something about the library...
Yeah.
On the call, and that he would make sure that it was less expensive than what it's saying now.
Oh, what he told us is she paid, it was mind blowing.
Well, that's good, it'll be less.
So...
And I'm only bringing it up, I mean, whatever the council thinks is more beneficial as far as the direction there, whether the access channels or...
Well, let's ask him right quick.
And, and I, I mean, again, I don't know how many people watch those, and I know Larry thought that...
Uh, the, the discussion with, uh, from our meeting that we, the meeting that we were in, uh...
I'm listening to it, I'm listening to it, I was watching you on YouTube.
Oh, okay.
So the question was, no pick channels, and then I thought Rich said, if you have five municipal locations, he can get down for you, right?
Yeah.
I think that was it.
There was, there was, yeah, there was, there was a number, but I, I couldn't remember, but I do remember you saying if we did away with the, the Penn channel, that there would be free access to...
Yep.
Okay.
100%, and I think, I was saying free access to City Hall, and Rich said, well, heck, if you got five of them, if you address them, then I'll, I'll get five of them down for you.
Oh, well, uh, then it sounds like we wanna substitute, uh, that for, so five free monthly connections to five different city locations, that would be a substitute for that?
Yes, that was Rich, not me.
But Rich is the CEO?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, that's, that's probably okay, then.
That is probably okay.
So you're the, you're the buffer now, okay?
Okay.
You go explain that one if that went right.
Yes, I'll, I'll, as soon as this, as soon as Bryce sends that email back, I am gonna go ahead and do it, yes.
Okay, well, yeah, that's fine, then, I can change that out and, and send that to you, I think we can appro, you know, if you want to approve it, because, I mean, it'll be written like that, five free, five free city location.
Five municipal building locations.
Does that include the library?
If that's one of them.
And to build the library gets funds from E-Rate. The library gets funds from E-Rate.
Okay.
They, they actually file, uh, 470 filings with USAC, Brass United Corporation.
Yes.
So for them, I don't think you, I don't think I can give, I don't think I can give a municipal building free service if they get E-Rate funds, because then I'm collusion.
Okay.
I'm against the law. Is that right, Bryce?
You know, I'll have to check that.
Yeah, since, since she files for, she files 470 with USAC, I can't, I can't even give the school something free, because that violates, if they're gonna get federal funding...
Yeah, they gotta use it for that.
Yeah.
I can't give them anything for free, I can, I'm letting them a hell of a lot cheaper for me, right?
Well, but it, it's five municipal locations within the city, like we can't pick the airport, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
I think Brian, they, they wanted something of an electric plant.
Right. Police station, yeah, I mean, I...
Yeah, imagine that, the guy that holds the poles wants internet.
Okay, well, we can switch that out.
All right, thanks, Desi.
That was up for discussion.
Oh, well, it sounds like a real good deal, I mean, but, but I think you're right, and I, I mean, if you take the rate at which folks watch...
Boris, I gotta say, is it true?
I was thinking, like, what is the school gonna do with an access channel, unless they have a TV production class, and then the school's gonna have to come up with money?
They have one today, and we, we just got, we don't think...
They don't ever use it.
So...
Do we have the equipment?
I can't answer that question, I just...
It's not...
That's, what you're talking about is why this came up as a disappointing conversation.
Wait, it's cool idea, but the school would have to have a grant to pay for the equipment.
I think that one time they did have like a night class or something, or something on there, that seemed like to me, I don't remember, it's been a long time ago, though.
Yeah.
Tyson's gonna laugh about it, he knows what we're talking about.
I mean, that's...
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
No, I think, do you want an actual answer, or do you wanna keep speculating?
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so presently, we have two access channels. One is government access and one is educational access. School hasn't done anything with the educational access channel in years. Probably five or six. It is still technically ours. It broadcasts simultaneously what ever Penn broadcasts. So, but in my opinion, as, as much as I would hate to lose the access channels for historical purposes, the number of people that watch that is probably a significantly lower rate than what we get on either YouTube or Facebook. So I don't think, I think we will lose a few older folks. That is unfortunate for them. You know, as long as Suddenlink is still in business, they can still watch it on Suddenlink. We're not losing access to that. It's just not gonna be on the new system. So, but if you're savvy enough to get fiber to the home, you're probably pretty comfortable with things like streaming services. So I, I didn't know that was on the table. But knowing that that's on the table, even as the guy who's gonna lose this channel, yeah, that's an obvious choice.
Well, we're at least 12 months out, if not even longer than that. What's, what's it gonna look like, 12 months from now as far as people streaming?
I think I have
Educate, educate, educate.
Three, three regular viewers of this program on Penn. And I think that's probably it. So...
And how many do you have on YouTube?
Well, tonight is an exception, since we're not streaming on Facebook. Think Facebook.
Rough average?
Rough average, five to 10 on YouTube, 30 to 40 on Facebook. It's considerably higher on Facebook. So tonight we have...
Are you using Restream? Are you using Restream to split the channels or just going off of one?
I know I use a different piece of hardware to go to Facebook. So my old Tracaster just goes to YouTube.
And if we had fiber, you could run both of them at the same time without any issues?
I do run both of them at the same, I don't know what, I don't know what problems you guys have, but...
But we don't have, we don't have the upload speed or the FER.
I have, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have more than enough upload speed with Suddenlink presently. And that's, I mean, I'm not, I'm just being fair.
Yeah.
You know, I have great upload speeds with Suddenlink and really great reliability at City Hall. So I don't have that kind of problem here. I can do both streams simultaneously. But that would be very frustrating if you did not.
Super frustrating. This one would be $300 a month.
Right. So, yeah. Jamie, you were just gonna say?
I was just gonna say, I mean, side note, but when you go to, look at hardware, does that change what we do?
No, no.
Just curious.
No. The only difference is, the new hardware, I won't have to have the additional hardware to stream to Facebook. I'll be able to do both of them at the same time.
15,000 didn't go 25?
It did not. No, no. And I don't know if they were gonna agree to pay the hardware cost for modulation to be on their system or not. But the last time I got a quote from Suddenlink for upgrading is 20 grand per channel. So, you know, 60 grand for three channels that no one's gonna watch, that's a lot.
Hard to justify.
Yeah, that is a lot of them. So, but yeah, that'd be my vote. So also, as a citizen, I say vote yes, because I want it to my house too. I work here, but I'm also a Jack Spings citizen.
I have to put the comments over.
I was busy.
He was some...
All right, any further discussion?
Is there any concern with approval of this before the agreement, the poll agreement?
I don't think so. No, I would say no. I mean, I'd say that we could approve this ordinance. They're gonna have to get a poll agreement. I mean, they have to have one. We're gonna negotiate that. I've already provided it for them. I'll tell you, it's the agreement that we used that, that was, was negotiated between the City of Fairview and Pioneer. Not that I negotiate between them. So that's a, that's a co-op company that, a rural electric company that, that has gotten into telecommunications now and they felt it was fair. I can't imagine that, you know, that this would, it all comes down to how much per poll, you know? I think Altice is paying six. They used to pay three. I think we went to six. We got 14 in, in Fairview. This document says 18, but that one got negotiated down to 14 per poll. And then, you know, there's a poll count, there's hundreds of polls and that's expressed as an, as a per poll, per year, annual count. You know, those polls are $150 to set them up, it's $200. So you get, you know, you get, you get a piece of that every year. That's, many have to be replaced each year. And of course, if we have an event, then, you know, we're gonna have to look to, to funding and then hopefully get reimbursed from FEMA.
So what permits are they getting prior to a poll agreement? You mentioned that...
It's a permit, what they do is they approve this ordinance. If you go to the last page, the last page is that they agree, it's very simple, acceptance by permit holder.
So it's just a permit for this?
Yeah, they're accepting, they're accepting that. And then we have to do the, the poll group. But that will at least get the planning, you know, we'll start meeting about where and what and attachments. And it's gonna be lots of work from, with Wheatley and, and Brian and a number of them. But at least, you know, we can get to work on it. I liked that first community in Oklahoma, that fiber to the home. And boy, that, you know, if you wanted to, that's tickling me, I'll tell you that, that first would be pretty cool.
Well, obviously, as a district company, we kind of think that's exciting too.
Yeah.
Any motions?
So we approve as is or do we need to approve as amended?
No, no, I would approve it as amended with their language that they originally presented. It's just one to five, you know, they just said one. It will be five municipal locations within the service area of our choice.
So I'll move as amended.
I second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Lines, yes. White.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Doe bag.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Motion on the...
Second.
Roll call.
Lines.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Doe bag.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Item number 10, consider items pertaining to the Perry Municipal Airport. Item A, consider approval of application for payment number three to Young Contracting LLC in amount of $398,335 for the improvements of the fuel farm project.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lines, yes. White.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Brown. Doe bag.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes, thank you. Item B, consider approval of $2,500 payment and a $3,000 payment to CEC Corporation for Engineering and Other Work on the Improved Fuel Farm Project.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lines, yes. White.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Doe bag.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes, thank you. Authorize the mayor to file for reimbursement $403,815 from the FAA and authorize the mayor to execute the appropriate documents on behalf of the city council. Get that money back.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lines, yes. White.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Doe bag.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item 11, consider convening executive session two. One, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title 25, Section 307b3 of the Oklahoma Statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry Commercial Park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to 25 OS 307c11 of the Oklahoma Statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lines, yes. White.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Doe bag.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development implementation of the proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the Oklahoma statute.
Motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yellow.
Yes.
Color.
Yes.
Color.
Yes. Item eleven, consider convening executive session two one, discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the Upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B three of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Number two, discuss a proposal pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry to entice a location of business, businesses to the Perry commercial park to create additional jobs and payroll as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development
All right, item 12 reconvene in the executive, or in the regular session.
Seven.
Seven. Director.
Both of them please.
Wines, yes. Wine?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Go back.
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Color?
Yes.
Strahler?
Yes.
Item 13 take any action deemed necessary pursuant to such executive section. Item 14 any new business. Item 15 the motion on adjournment.
Slidely.
Sam is about to pass out. Both of them.
Wines? Yes, wine.
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Go back.
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Color?
Yes.
Strahler?
Yes.
Item 13 take any action deemed necessary pursuant to such executive section. Item 14 any new business. Item 15 the motion on adjournment.
Slidely.
Sam is about to pass out. Both of them.
Wines? Yes, wine.
Yes.